Meeting, if you'll please, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Here, thank you very much for that. Okay, we have a guest presentation tonight for the council. It's Clackamas River Water Providers. We're happy to see you again. I've seen you over the years numerous times, been on your trips.
Yep.
Gotta say, it's been very educational and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I will let you take it away.
Well, good evening. My name's Christine Hollenbeck and I work for the Clackamas River Water Providers. I've got a little PowerPoint presentation. I do understand that I'm here kind of specifically to focus on water conservation. But to begin with, I'll just do a brief overview of who the Clackamas River Water Providers are and what we do for that group whom the city of Estacada is a member of our group. Feel free to just stop me if you have any questions as I'm going along. I'd like to be as informal as possible. It just seems a little more comfortable. And so, next slide. So the Clackamas River Water Providers is all of the cities and public water providers, which we have a couple districts and an authority who all use the Clackamas River as a drinking water source. So we are all focused on public drinking water and then the watershed protection, source water protection. These are the members of the Clackamas River Water Providers. And while they all pay into this group annual dues to be members, the dues are based on their annual finished water production. They each maintain their own autonomy. And our programs are, we have two programs, our water conservation program on our source water protection program. Our programs are solely funded by water rates. Okay. Wait, I'm sorry, could you go back really quick? So I just wanted to note here, like Sunrise Water Authority, if you're not familiar with Sunrise Water Authority, they actually provide water to the Happy Valley, Damascus, and a little bit of unincorporated Clackamas County. We also have South Fork Water Board. South Fork Water Board is a drinking water treatment plant that is jointly owned by the city of Westland and the city of Oregon City. And then, um, I guess that's, that would be about it. The ones here that have a star on them receive not only our source water protection program, but also our public education outreach and water conservation program. The cities of Lake Oswego and Tigard, who own a treatment plant together due to a partnership that was, I think in 2012, they began that partnership. They had their own water conservation program, though they do benefit from a lot of the materials and public education and outreach that we develop. Okay, thank you. Um, so the Clackamas River Water Providers, we have an IGA and bylaws. We have a board. The board is made up of managers of the different cities and/or of the different water providers and their alternates. We do bi-monthly meetings. Now, we mainly get together via Zoom virtually. We used to get together in person. It just seems to work out much easier for folks to get together virtually. We have a five-year work plan and an annual budget process. Like I said earlier, we have a source water protection program. My counterpart, Kim Swan, who also manages our group, manages the source water protection program. And then myself, again, who does the public education outreach and the water conservation program. A little bit about our source water protection programs' goals is to identify, prevent, minimize, and mitigate any activities that are known or potentially harmful to impact the drinking water source. So while in some cases we don't have any regulatory authority, we can, you know, write letters, you know, of things that may be going on. One of the things that comes to mind for me is that one time there was a, what does that stand for? CAFO? It's like a cow feeding lot, like thing, very near to the Clackamas River. So we wrote a letter to the county stating why that would be bad for the water quality of the river. Promote public awareness and stewardship of the healthy watershed ecology in collaboration with many stakeholders with the Clackamas River. This is just a list of some of the programs that our watershed protection program has. I won't go into depth. I won't read them for you. Melanie will maintain a copy of this PowerPoint. In the end, I will encourage you to visit our website because there's a lot of information on there, a lot of the things that we do in regards to each one of these in helping to protect the Clackamas River and the quality of the water in the river. This is the program that I manage. We have a very large youth education program. I work with five different school districts and currently 54 schools. That's all the way from elementary schools through high school. Many partnerships, for example, Water Environment Services with Clackamas County, Clackamas River Basin Council, to name a couple. In the summertime, I do many public and community events that are located within each one of our member service areas. That gives me an opportunity to have FaceTime with your customers and be able to talk to them about water conservation, the watershed, and also just drinking water in general. We have a conservation rebate program, an extremely robust rebate program. We have our residential landscape water audit program, and then we have a variety of outreach materials and water conservation materials and tools. I also have a lot, this is just an example of one of the things that we provide to customers that say low water using hose nozzle. But we also have low water using showerheads, kitchen faucet aerators, bathroom aerators. They call them a flow diverter for toilets. And these are all different tools that people can use to help save water inside the home. I give those to people per request. I don't necessarily take them to events. They can be expensive, so I just don't want people taking them and not using them. This is an example of a couple of the things. We have some banners over here on the left. We have a number of different banners that I take to public events, a couple summer brochures that we've done in the past. And then in the middle there, we have an annual water calendar that we do with the elementary school students in our service areas. This is a copy of our rebate brochure. If somebody took advantage of all the rebates in that brochure, they could get back up to $485. We have this free landscape water audit program. We have contracted with a landscape professional to perform these audits for us. This is our fifth year, I think, doing the audit program. It's been very successful, very popular. People are very happy with the recommendations that they get. And I feel like it's, I'm hoping it's helping. You know, we can provide people with that information. Hopefully, they're using it.
Can I interrupt you for a quick question on that specifically? Do you guys track any data for like per capita in the different areas where you have that program that are taking advantage of it? I just wanted to kind of know where we stand in Estacada per capita compared to the most successful municipality that's doing that program and kind of look at what they're doing that we're not. If there's any ideas of what we could be doing better to get residents to take advantage of the water audit program.
So to answer your question, the answer is yes. Every, you could jump on our website right now and look at last year, 22 to 23, our annual report. And I will have the, not only the audits, but all of the rebates broken down to, you know, member, the city of Estacada, and how many of each one your customers took advantage of. So the same thing I do, I break it down like that so that if you ever ask, I have that information for you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you bet. Next. We also have an indoor leak detection kit that we provide to customers. We have toilet leak detection tablets, the toilet displacement bay, like I said, faucet aerators, water engages to help somebody do their own irrigation audit if they want to. And then these low water using hose nozzles. And this right here is an image of a yard sign. Six years ago, we started what we called our summer watering campaign. It's all focused on the Clackamas River's river levels at the end of summer and the beginning of fall, focused around the fall fish migration. And so what we try to do is we generally kick this off the beginning of August or the middle of August, depends on what the weather's been like, how hot and dry it's been. And this campaign basically teaches and educates your customers about how they can really cut down on their outdoor water use, be more efficient, and then hopefully be able to just cut off all outdoor water use by the end of August, the beginning of September. And that leaves water in the river for the migrating fish. So if you have any questions around that, happy to answer. We do, we share a packet of information with all of our members so that you have information you can put out in your newsletters, your website, social media and all of that. And then we have pages that are off all the rest of the year, and then we bring them up on our own website specific to this. And that's all. And this is a picture of our website. We have lots of information for the public education outreach and water conservation program. You can click, click on the conservation tab. There's a whole dropdown list there. And then also for the youth education program, we have a whole lot of information and resources for teachers. And then our watershed protection program tab, if you clicked on that, there's more information about that tab.
Right.
And that would be all.
Thank you, Christine. Are there any questions, Christine, over here, that you didn't get answered?
Just, just a quick one with the landscape audits. How many folks do you have out in the field doing those? Because I've heard some, from some people around here that they just don't want to trouble you. They feel like you've got stuff going on. What would you say to them?
First of all, I'd say thank you for being concerned about our limited. Currently, we, Larry Potter Landscape is the professional that we contract with to do these audits, and he and his grandson Kyle do the audits. There, I also have, he's actually a retired water conservation specialist off on this side that has his own audit program or audit business that he's starting up right now. And he used to work for the city of Lake Oswego. And so my agreement with Larry and Kyle is that if they get overwhelmed and they're, we're getting more than they can handle, then we'll bring on Larry.
All right, thank you.
And again, if you get a chance, get on their website because it is very educational. And if you get a chance, go on their tour. So maybe we can get some invites to these guys out there this year.
Yes, yes. So we do an annual watershed tour every year, the first Saturday of October.
Yeah.
And generally, we have really good weather. We've got very lucky. And it is, we do the upper part of the watershed one year, the next year we'll do the lower part. This year, we will be touring all of the treatment plants on the lower portion of the river. So if you're interested, you can get our contact information from Melanie and we'll get you on the invite list.
All right. Well, thank you, and we appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Now we are moving on to the consent agenda. I'm returning everything I was going to pull out. We're gonna go off it. So if you give me a motion for the consent agenda, if you have a chance to read it.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, but first, do I have a second?
Second.
Ever first and second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that. Okay, we are moving on to department and committee reports. I will start off. Terry?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the full arts commission meeting. I was at work. I got to chime in just quickly, just to throw, throw some ideas at them. It looked like they had a youth youth applications and they were interviewing the youth. So that's, I'm glad that's underway. Downtown Estacada Commission. They, they, they just basically spoke about the their plans for all their upcoming events, what they're going to put on social media, how they, they, a lot of the talk revolved around the Fourth of July Parade, which was very successful, from what I understand. And then they talked about upcoming events. The, they, they have one spot on their commission that's, that's opened up. And then just gave me stuff to take to the Arts Commission meeting that I actually was able to get in and speak about. So.
Very great. Thank you.
Traffic and Public Safety had a big one. Chief Mendoza came, shared what we get with our contract, went over all the different resources that CCSO provides. It was very in-depth. I asked Chief Mendoza if he would come and present to the council himself so that you guys could ask questions and then see the budget broken down on what we're paying for. And he said he would oblige to that. So we should be hearing from him in detail presented to us shortly on that. Then moving forward, the biggest topic we dove into was the speed bump policy. They put it together and they shot it to Melanie. There was one portion that where they went back and forth on quite a bit, and Melanie decided to pull it because she felt like it just didn't make sense. And that's on whether you could private pay to get a speed bump or not, or whether the city just pays for it. And then Melanie, I believe, is going to present you guys what we, a rough draft of what we've come up with shortly. Other than that, oh, fentanyl, fentanyl is spewing. And they presented a lot of resources and are narrowing down resources to put on the website, both for prevention and awareness. So.
Hey, great. Heidi?
So D E I C had a presentation from the Energy Trust of Oregon. They are a partnership with PGE that helps people in Oregon and Southwest Washington through energy savings and clean energy solutions with free home assessments, technical assistance, tax credits, and cash incentives. So it's very informative. And I encourage everybody to go to energietrust.org and see if you can benefit from any of that.
Great. Mike? I just got a quick question. My committee was dissolved. Do I need to pick up one of the new ones or?
Yeah, we should probably put you to work on something else.
I'd love to get on the EDC, be the liaison for the EDC that's coming up.
All right.
If everyone's okay with it.
No. I, well, see, I was gonna weigh in on that one, but that's okay. I could go anyway. So I don't need.
I obviously think that Mike would be perfect for the Economic Development Commission.
Yeah. See, we got a lot of people happy about that.
Okay, all right. That was a quick solution.
Yeah.
I'm okay with having no extra work to shoot. So. You go for it.
I'll put you on the spot. Okay, well.
Met with the library board on the 27th. They're getting a new service over there, a new mobile printing service. So that will help folks. You don't have to log into a computer anymore. If you need to print things off, you can just upload them, I believe, to the, to the server, and they can print it right there at the desk for you. So they're looking to get a lot of use out of that. And then in May, just a quick number, they got 98 new library cards. That is a record for them. So business is booming at the library.
Okay, Jane, journey.
Parks and Rec met. They had two applications come through for the youth volunteer position. And one was a seventh grader, the other was a ninth grader. So they had a lot of good discussion on that, both great applicants. And they decided to go with Lane Jackson, who is in seventh grade. And so he will be our new youth representative for Parks and Rec. Ivy Cleanup was successful. They're thinking of doing another one in late July or August, and they're hoping for more volunteers next time. Concerts in the Park, the first event, will, will already happen since I was at this meeting. So I'm assuming everything went, went all right. And then the next event will be July 14th. And during those events, Parks and Rec will have a booth, and they are also handing out the park survey just to see what, you know, what community members are wanting to see in their parks, you know. So what, what are prior, what's priority to the citizens of Estacada? And they were hoping to have a QR code to scan. So you could do a QR code scan, take the survey as well. So that was an option they were kicking around. And they also had some discussion, brainstorming about incorporating the, was it the 100, 120th anniversary celebration? They were like throwing a couple of different numbers out at the meeting and we're like, wait, we're trying to do the math, 120 years. Yeah. So they were doing some brainstorming about how they can be involved in that anniversary celebration, what they can do. So it should be pretty cool. And then also the committee went over their training for the, the new members, the new committee members that are on board. That was it.
Hey, thank you for that. Now it's time for the city manager and city attorneys report.
Okay, we have a little slide deck up there. Great, thank you, Karen. All right, I want to start out with a little summer water usage statistics and the, the code, the ordinance that the council adopted. And then their second reading was June 24th, so it doesn't actually go into effect until July 24th. But we're going to start promoting being educated and just having people chip in on this endeavor to conserve water during the summer months. You can see up here that chart, that's on our homepage of our website. So if you go to cityofestacada.org and scroll down just a little bit, you can check the water usage each day, each day. It's uploaded, probably, it's updated probably by nine o'clock in the morning, eight, eight or not yet. As early as we can get it updated, the guys send us the number from the plant and yes.
Can we get a call to action on that? If you don't know that you're supposed to click on that to get to the water audits, there's nothing on the website that will tell you where to go for a water audit. It just has a picture. It looks like it's information on there. I know to click on it.
Right.
But I think it would help if we had a call to action, like free water audit, something that tells them to click on it to get to the water audit.
Good idea. Right, because I didn't know you could click on it at first either, and it would go someplace. I was just looking at the chart. So yes, that, let me jot that down. Okay, so you can see on here that we've kind of been hovering around the million gallon a day mark, bumping up to 1.2 till, of course, the heat wave. And Christine just mentioned also that all the water plants right now are running at full capacity because it's been crazy hot. So if the, if that, when that ordinance goes into effect, today would have been day two of our stage one. And then, or excuse me, today would have been day three because Saturday and Sunday would have been day one and two. This, we'd likely, I don't see water usage going down today with the temperatures the way they are. But we'll find out in the morning. And then likely, it could hit even 1.5, which would push us into day one of stage two. So I just wanted to say, we'll, we'll start acting as if this is in force now, but it's not, it's just informational at this point. And so if we hit the stage one, which is three days of 1.4 or above, well, it's 1.4. Then we would request that everybody curtail their water use by 10%.
And there's a slide.
Oh, sorry. Yep, can you move, I moved my slide forward, forgot to tell you. Next slide, please. And then city hall, our city, the city is going to halt watering lawns on public property, high traffic areas like around the amphitheater, flower baskets that don't last, things like that will continue, but we'll, we'll cut back. And we're trying to cut back as it is. I was just informed today about some watering on, in our Campanella Park that's being overwatered. Checking into that, finds out, find out that we're not actually controlling that. So I sent Public Works to try to figure out how to control that water. Yes.
I heard from, from someone today that one of the new light fixtures, there was water running out of one of the new light fixtures on. Do they have water? Do they have watering capability?
They do have, yes. The lights have water and the trees have power. It's kind of weird. Yes, thank you, because we don't have baskets on all of them, but we have the baskets at the one intersection. So I'll have the guys check on that too, guys and gals. Okay. Right, because they might be on, because we have to water those four. So I don't know if we can turn them off at the base, but we'll find out. Anyway, the city will cut down. These are just, these are the, the six things that happen at stage one. So we'll, we'll continue informing people of that on the website, on Facebook. If people don't like have a habit of checking that, let's pass the word. Well, we can email HOAs. We, there's certain, we can get, try to get the word out best we can, but if you can encourage people to pay attention and see if we can, you know, obviously water use is going to go up. The goal is to have it go up when needed, and then bring it down for a couple of days so we can make sure that all of our reservoirs are staying full. Because it taps us out eventually. We can do it for a while, and then it taps out. We need just a day or two to recoup, and then we're off and running again. On the next slide, what's the plan? So if the, today, if the production exceeds 1.4, then we'll be posting that stage one alert informationally tomorrow. And we'd like to, again, share this information with friends and family to pay attention. And I see it kind of as a little game, but it's serious too. But you know, can, what can we do? Can we, how can we work as a community to bring our, you know, to conserve water, use what we need, but don't waste? All right, next slide. Quick update on the new wastewater facility that keeps moving forward. And we did receive confirmation from the DEQ and EPA. They confirmed that we do qualify for the project waiver that we needed to get that equivalency loan through the DEQ. So we thought the interest rate would be discounted by 1%. It turns out it will be discounted to 1%. So that's, if, just using the little calculators that are online for amortization, that's about $10 million of interest saving over 30 years, which is, that's huge. And so I really appreciate, I appreciate Elena, if she's still on here, for tracking with that and being willing to keep pushing it forward because it was very uncertain. And finding out now is fantastic because we didn't think we'd find out for a little while longer. We will continue to seek other grants. So far, we have about $6.4 million, the state grant, the federal grant, and $2 in the, in the loan that's forgivable. So it's a grant with the loan program. So 6.4 so far, and we will continue to work on more. Next slide, please. The Fourth of July was a great day. Thank you to all who came out for the ripping, cutting. It was a lot of fun. We had Mayor Drinkwine, Councilor McElroy, Councilor Hughes, Councilor Metcalf, Councilor Strobel, we had Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Scholl from county. And we even had a Sandy city councillor come over. Councilor Chris Maitin came from Sandy. And then somehow they didn't make it in the picture. But Brianna Irish and Sarah Schmidt, they're from Wyden's office and Merkley's office, and they were out here. I think Bree even did some animal judging prior to the parade start to help out. So it was a great day. It was a beautiful ripping, cutting. The picture didn't work out, like I imagined this huge parade behind them, but of course pictures never turn out as things look to me. So, but it was great, and I appreciate the celebration of, of that day. So.
What about all those people?
I know. Look at the people lining the streets. Yep, it was a great day. All right, next slide. I'm going to pass this over to Peter because I think everybody's heard that the US Supreme Court made a decision on grants passed, B Johnson, which is.
So you may have heard about this case. We've certainly talked about it a bunch. I think a lot of us that listen to oral argument believe that it would come down as a 6-3 verdict based on the questions were being asked, came down as a 6-3 verdict. Upholding or rather saying that the grants passed camping initiative and code did not violate the AIDS Amendment. In addition to federal law, there's also a state law on this. It's House Bill 3115, and that was something that when our governor was Speaker of the House, she had introduced, and it says that a city can have reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on on camping. We have a camping ordinance in the city of Lake Oswego. On camping, that we have a camping ordinance in the city of like us, we are. I was thinking of the city that I was talking to about this issue, uh, we have a, we have a camping ordinance in the city of Estacada. And and I, I wanna, I wanna draw a distinction between camping and sleeping. So we can absolutely uh regulate camping, um, no question. And I believe this even before the Supreme Court ruled that, because I had just interpreted those cases a little bit differently than some other people. Camping is when you're using equipment, whether that equipment is a tent, whether that equipment is. A um wooden structure, which are incredibly problematic, um, and dangerous, particularly if you have an open flame. Which is something that can also be prohibited. Where we have to be really careful, um, is one, making sure that what we're doing is because of health and safety concerns. So when we're talking about like an open flame, propane tank, all of that, particularly in this community surrounded by forests. Those are dangerous activities and we need to be very careful and we need to regulate that strictly and make sure, in my opinion, people aren't using it. I represent a city, the city of Gearheart, we had people that were camping in cars a number of months ago, someone was using a heating device in their car. Car caught on fire, uh, less than two blocks from the fire station. Fortunately, the gentleman is able to, his jack caught on fire, he was able to get out of the car. Uh, so we prohibited the open flame in that um, in that city, because we're trying to keep everybody safe. I read fairly recently that over half of the fire calls that Portland Fire responds to. Are due to folks using open flames or propane tanks, and so. That, that is just from a public safety perspective, you know, something that, that I think our current definition. Protects us uh by saying that's banned, and it should. Where I get uncomfortable is if we attempt to say sleeping bag. Because a sleeping bag is something that keeps people warm when they're sleeping. And we, we need to be careful that we do not criminalize sleeping. So if someone wants to take a nap during the day on a park bench, and you know, there are people that go on a walk during their lunch and then take a little snooze. Um, perfectly fine, um, if we're, if people have the, um, they need to. The case law is pretty clear that people need to be able to. A prohibition of anything that would keep people warm, I think, would be very problematic as far as defense of a, of a, of a standard. So if we're talking about a blanket or a, um, and this is the one part of our. Camping, and I don't even want to call that camping, because really what that is is sleeping, not camping. But that, that is what I think we probably need to pull out of the definition for campsite. I think that having, um, I have always been really uncomfortable with cities allowing. Lean-tos or shacks or other wooden structure, because I think it causes a selective enforcement issue. Um, the reason we have health and safety in a uniform uh building code isn't to make it hard for developers to build houses. It's to keep people safe, and if you have structures that are intended for sleeping, to be constructed, that don't follow those codes. Um, I think, I, I think a city might have liability. And I, I've always thought that, I taught a continuing legal education course on that in the city of Portland. Um, and told them that I thought that it's selective enforcement problem. Um, and also that by blocking sidewalks, um, they were creating ADA. Allowing the blockness sidewalks, they were creating Americans with Disabilities Act, they ended up getting sued on that very issue and losing. So, um. We, we need to make sure that our camping ordinance is reasonable, it's pretty reasonable with some minor tweaks. And then I think, um, and again, uh, it, we can always improve on language if people have better ideas. And um, then we just need to uh enforce uniformly. So if we're not allowing um house members of the community to pitch a tent in the city park. Then we, someone shouldn't be discriminated against based on um whether they have a fixed address or not. So again, these are, these are things that just made me very uncomfortable in other jurisdictions when we've had this conversation. So, um, I think most of our things are for self, health and safety reasons. When we reopen this code, if we reopen this code, which would be my recommendation, because we still have that state law on the books. Um, we need to make sure that this is gra, these are grounded and health and safety and that's what will um protect us. And that is what will make it so people understand that we're not um. A city that needs to go to Luba or the courts or something like that. And, um, I think that um compassion and empathy are very helpful. Um, and sometimes that way that you help people get the help they need is to encourage them to, um. To take those steps and make sure that they can sleep. But. Also keep the community safe by preventing illegal structures. Uh, particularly in riparian areas, we've had that conversation before, that makes me very uncomfortable if. I recently read that the Willamette River is, might be declared a super fun site. Because of the amount of garbage that's going into it. Um, and obviously that creates a lot of public health problems too. So, uh, again, I think that the good news is we have clarity from the Supreme Court. Because we had the Boise case and the Grants Pass case, uh, they were both a bit confusing. And difficult to understand, particularly in tandem with each other, now we have better clarity. In other instances where there has been a reasonable standard, whether it's a noise ordinance. Those have not necessarily been uh enforceable. HB three one one five has a reasonableness standard. It, it has not been challenged, it's on the books, we should always assume though on the books is, is valid. Um, but again, I think that. My recommendation is that, is that we be very careful. And then we ground, we ground any regulations that we have in, in public health and safety. For, for everyone in the community, whether they're permanent resident or someone passing through.
Yeah.
Did Grants Pass make any accommodations for House Bill thirty one fifteen after the Supreme Court upheld theirs, their uh?
So, House Bill thirty one one five was passed after the Grants Pass uh passed their law. And during that appellate process, Grants Pass. Couldn't change their law, because to do so would have made the case moot. And I think there was a consensus among a lot of lawyers following the issue was, was that. Because there's a split in the jurisdictions between the Ninth Circuit and other circuits, and the Ninth Circuit was the only one that had ruled, made these rulings. That that law had to remain in effect during the entire process. So I don't know, uh, Grants Pass will um revisit their camping ordinance. In lieu of HB three one one five, we're not, but uh they may.
But their current ordinance was upheld by the Supreme Court, so if anything up to that and not surpassing it. You'd be feeling comfortable legally since it's already made it to the Supreme.
So it, it, the, the question, the question in front of the Supreme Court was whether a camping, whether the camping. Restrictions were rule an unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment. So not whether or not they complied with the state law, but whether or not. It met that burden, and previously there have been cities that did like sit lie bands, like where they said Eugene being one of them, San Francisco being one of them. And those have been upheld. Under federal law, this, this newest case, people have been trying to art, make the Eighth Amendment argument for a long time. And this is the first time that, that judgment had been grounded in that. And that's why they then were saying, some people were saying, well, you can't do any sort of regulations. And I completely disagreed with that analysis, but that, that's what a Multnomah County judge said, so. Some people obviously didn't agree with me.
I don't know.
Well, so, so we're, we're still under House Bill three one one five, though, is that, is that correct and, and?
Correct, and that's why I think that we, we always have had camping regulations on the books. And that's why we might want to, it did, we now have clarity on the Eighth Amendment. In order to stay in line with HB three one one five, we may want to make some minor tweaks to our thing, yeah.
So I've seen some interviews saying that they expect some cities are going to challenge uh House Bill three one one five, have you heard anything?
I mean, I, um, with all respect to the, the governor, and I think the governor was trying to add clarity. Um, I would never want to ground a law in a, it used to be called the reasonable man. Standard, reasonable person, because it's like, it's like the, um. It's like noise, like what, what noise would be offensive, like to some people. Um, classical music might be offensive, it, it'll low volume to other people, it's not, so that's why our. Noise ordinance is based on decibels, because it's objectively too loud or not. And that's why we have hours like after X, after what, is it nine or ten, whatever it is. After ten, then more, a more rigorous standard goes into effect, because people want to sleep during the night.
So you don't see it being challenged, then?
I think it, I think it could easily be challenged, but um even if I, even if I believe that a state law is flawed. My belief is we have to follow the law until it's, in like, um. When I represented House, when I represented Damascus and there was House Bill forty twenty-nine, I believe that was unconstitutional and I said so. And then so did the Oregon Court of Appeals, but during dependency of that law, we followed it.
So Melanie, are we going to be discussing this in upcoming?
We, yes, we can bring it back and discuss it, I would say this council also, all already. Slightly challenged it by deciding not to adopt time, place, manner restrictions, uh but to just leave our. Camp, camping code as it stood, um, and we've fared well with, um, I feel like we fared well with it. But we will, we'll come back and discuss it, yes, and it's not in Title sixteen, so it, it could be a quicker discussion than land use.
So my, my concern with uh tweaking the ordinance, um, uh, we have a police. Force that uh serves over several different jurisdictions and um enforcement of that could get pretty tricky. If the wording, you know, if, if uh, you know, if it's different here than it is in, you know, unincorporated Clackamas County. If it's different here than it is in, you know, in, in Clackamas and Sand, or I guess Sandy's got their own police. But, you know, if it's different for us than it is for the rest of, the rest of the jurisdictions that they, that they serve. Because not all of our, um, not all of our calls out here are to our specific deputies. We still have uh other Clackamas County Sheriff's deputies answering to, you know, in Estacada, so, um.
So they, they weren't, they weren't using this code. During the period that it's been in effect since HB three one one five. Because my understanding is the county council had expressed some concerns with this code. So that was a tool we could have used that was not in use. So again, we'll want to have a conversation with our officers, um, um, with Officer Mendoza. Uh, to make sure he's comfortable, I think with some minor tweaks that this, this will work, given the Supreme Court ruling.
So at this point, though, we're not discussing it tonight, it's just a heads up, and we'll, we'll be discussing.
We will be bringing this back.
You can send the.
Can, can you reach out to Grants Pass Attorney and find out if they plan to make any changes to their code? Based on the decision from the Supreme Court as it relates to HB thirty one fifteen?
I can do that.
Good, yeah.
Okay, and I do have um Chief Mendoza on the schedule for your next council meeting to come. And, and talk about our no camping enforcement. Um, and also the changes that are coming up with Measure one ten, starting September first. And how the county is uh dealing with that and, and how that will be also rolled out in Estacada. So he'll be coming to talk about those at your next meeting.
Okay, great.
One other quick one for you, Peter.
Yeah.
If you could find out if it's, if there's any legal uh risk to putting code in our uh language in our code. That would help with enforcement if people are moving to private property, like for instance, if. Um, they're on PGE property within city limits, I don't know, just trying to think of things like that. Where if they're moving out of city parks and they're onto private property without the permission, similar like, if you go hunting, someone brought that up to me. If you go hunting on private property and you're, and you're hunting for deer, and you have to show written um permission. That you're allowed to be there, otherwise you can be kicked off if you don't, something of that, to that effect, that if someone's on private property. That we know they don't have permission to be on and they're camping on it, if we can put language in our code for enforcement of that.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, my understanding is both ODOT and PGE have hired um private companies to help. To help remediate some of these issues, so.
No, and we do have, uh, the sheriff's office does have, uh, what's it called, it's a trespass, they can trespass people. From PGE, they already have that agreement in place, and so they're able to do that. And, and um not allow people to be staying on PGE property. Another large piece of property we have in the city is the old mill site, and we need to get something in place for that as well. With the owners and management of that, that big, large piece of property.
Okay. Got all the questions, answer, everybody's good, all right, thank you, is that all you have on your report?
That is everything.
All right, thank you for that.
I got one request, can, can we start to get a list of what grants we're looking at or what we're going after? I'd like, we're, we're identifying problems, but then we're, like, I can't answer our community when they ask me. Well, what grants are we going on, say, for Parks and Rec, what grants are we going after for insert whatever? So is there a way with the staff that we could start to see something presented to us on what we're trying to get money for, like, say, the water project, Lake Shore?
Mm-hmm, definitely, in fact, I want to put together um a, like a history of our parks grants. We've got, we've been very successful with um the state park program grants, the local government grants. And county tourism to a certain degree, we've also for our streets and sidewalks and ADA ramps, um, the, um. It used to be the small cities allotment grant through ODOT, um, we don't qualify for that, so it's a different one now. And then also, um, our community development block grants, that's helped us out. But I can kind of put together a little chart of those, of those grants that we've received and, um. Will, if, as we apply for more, then we'll bring them to you, we're not, I don't think we have any open applications right now.
And then on the, uh, just a quick question that came to my mind, I'm sure maybe you answered this in a roundabout way. But are we trespass people or assigning fines to the people that are breaking these camping rules? Or can we start to ask that tickets are written, I mean, what kind of enforcement are we doing other than please go?
There's a, in our code, there's a, um, there's a maximum fine, that can be levied at five hundred dollars.
Okay, but are we charging that?
Well, so. Because of, as I understand it, because of the opinion of the county council, um, those. Like, which was that we could not use this code, then nobody's being cited because that they were not going to. They're not going to do it. So again, we want to, we, this is why we're going to bring it back and we're going to make sure that our officers are comfortable with this. And you're comfortable with it, and um, you know, that, that we have the full. Array of tools necessary in order to address concerns.
And even though um fines are not being assessed, um, it does not mean that folks are not being um engaged. And, and worked with to either say, you know, if there's, obviously if there's criminal activity, that's addressed as a criminal activity. But if it's not criminal activity, there's other, other um options that. Our deputies or um other community groups can work with these, with folks who might need, be in need of help. Um, so it's not just, it's not like we're just ignoring folks who um may be in need of help. Some folks look like they need help and they may not, and that, and that is kind of at the discretion of the, typically of a deputy. If somebody's looking like they're distressed, um, and lately we've had some close by here. So it's being handled, but I feel like they have, they have a good handle on um. How to help, best help the, the people, and if they are, you know, if they're littering, making messes and things like that, that's against our code. And that can be enforced, um, sometimes assessing a fine, it doesn't have as great of an impact as um the. Actually, um, the communication with them and helping them figure out where they need to go and.
Cuz we don't really have any services. And so sometimes it's helping them. By figure out what services are in the county or region and then helping them get to. Those services and that's something that Ant Farm does.
They do that, or back to their own property if they do have a place to be. Okay.
All right, we'll move on to council business. Uh, first thing on council business is the second consideration ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero two. An ordinance amending Title sixteen development of the Estacada Municipal Code, political signs. We've had this in front of us once. So can I get a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero two and ordinance amending Title sixteen. Development of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Okay, I got a first, so I have a second.
Well, second?
First and second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed?
No.
That's a definite no, isn't it? Love that, Jerry, no.
You're consistent though.
Okay, second. Um, thing on here is the ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero six. An ordinance uh, declaring a permanent ban on psilocybin service centers and the ma- manufacturing of psilocybin products. So Peter, I'm gonna let you take that.
Yeah, so as, as you guys may remember in twenty uh, twenty two. Um, because the Estacada voters had not voted in favor of uh, the psilocybin. Um, this state originally said that a city would, could pass a, a two-year moratorium. And I, I think like the next week. The next wish you had passed um, the ballot title for the two-year moratorium. And then after that, after that was already on the ballot, the, the state had come in and, and said that, that okay, cities can do a permanent. Um, and, and that two-year moratorium passed by like sixty percent of the vote, I think it was, was it sixty forty?
It was, yeah, just about sixty forty.
About sixty forty. Um, so. They've now clarified that we can, we could do another two-year ban or that we could do a permanent ban. And in case you guys wanted to do a permanent ban, we prepared the ballot title for a permanent ban. That would, we would put that on the November ballot and then Estacada voters would have to decide to. Um, so if you guys wanna authorize that, then we can get that on the ballot and then the voters get to choose.
Hey, how's councils feel about that? All comfortable with that? Everybody?
I think there's new research that would suggest that suicide and studies have been linked to helping people with PTSD and other things like that, so. My mind on this is not so cut and dry on banning, get rid of it for good. I mean, I think that there's a lot of good going on in this community.
Okay.
Uh, I would rather do a vote for a moratorium instead of a full prohibition.
Okay, so a two-year, uh, re-up the two?
Um, I'd like to put it to a vote for a permanent ban and not. I have, I have been paying attention to the studies and I think, I mean, I like. Listen to Sean Ryan, I, I know there's a lot of good that comes out of it. But when I'm looking at like the business names of local businesses and establishments, it's like. Doesn't really seem like this is some sort of reputable doctor that you're going to see and have it monitored and things like that, so. I, I'm leaning toward just leaving it up to the voters of Estacada for the permanent ban right now, just because it's not very well. I think it's there yet as far as regulation and whatnot, so.
We did permanently ban it um, with a vote. Would we have to go back to a vote to unban it or could they counsel?
No, we would have to go to a vote of the people to unban it if we did a, if we did a, a full ban. So, you know, two-year, if we, if you guys prefer to do a two-year, we could do that and then council would need to. Decide whether to do it again. I just, based on um, kind of the views that were expressed last go around, I know this is a different council and, and also the. Margin of the passage. Yeah, that's what made us think that maybe we present it for the permanent.
I'm in support of it going back before the people for a vote for a full ban. I mean, it's a ban in Estacada, it's not, I'm, I'm pretty sure Portland's not gonna be banning it, so there're gonna be plenty of places for people to go acquire it, just like. Marijuana, they can go other places and acquire it, just won't be able to get it locally. So, and, and it sounds like the. Residents of Estacada spoke pretty loudly with their vote and excited to see them have an opportunity to decide whether they wanna permanently ban it or not.
So I think the way out of this is just to, to take a vote right now. On a permanent ban versus a uh, two-year, that way we've got an idea where we're going with this. Uh, if we want you to take it forward and put it on the ballot, so let's, let's do that right now. Um, let's uh, put it up for a vote for a permanent ban. I'll make a motion.
Make a motion for a permanent.
Yeah, make a motion for a permanent ban. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Uh, a move to approve an ordinance declaring a permanent ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a first and a second, so let's vote on it right now. Everyone in favor of a permanent ban, raise your hand. Everybody not? Okay, we're on three. So take it to the voters.
All right, so we will take it to the voter. So this passed the ordinance. Next, your next meeting, the ordinance will come back for a second. Passing and we'll bring, we'll bring a resolution, um, that includes the tal- the ballot title and measure.
Okay, interestingly enough, um, that uh. The businesses, some of the businesses that are challenging the regulations and they're challenging them in federal court. Which was a really interesting choice because it's still federally a scheduled prohibitive drug, but. Jerry?
So I kind of feel like we missed the discussion uh. Section of that vote, but that's okay. I just wanted to get, I just wanted to get my point across. So in two years since we did our moratorium. Uh, there's been so much more research and so much more that has come out of the research that is good. I'm not saying that it's all good. But in two years since we did our mo- moratorium, there's been so much good research and so mu- so much good has come from that research. That I really feel like going with a permanent ban, we're doing a disservice. Because if we did another two-year moratorium, more. Either more, there, more is gonna come out of this research or it's just gonna be. You know, it's gonna go the opposite direction. So I really think that going with the permanent ban, we're doing a disservice to the. You know, to the community, so I think a two-year moratorium would be. I think the, the idea that this is actually going to the voters speaks to that, because if you feel that way. Then a lot of other people are gonna feel that way. So we're gonna know right away if it goes to the voters, if that's the consensus. In this area, and I, I, you know, I think that's what it's really all about, is more than just us here, you know? Yeah, we're taking away, we're taking away a choice. We're giving them. Either all the way no, or. All the way yes, we're taking away that choice for that future res- for that future research to happen. In, you know, for our, for our area. So that's what I'm saying. Anybody want on that before we move on?
I just actually agree with them, but. I think that the people's voice is what matters at the end, not ours like you stated, so it's in the people's hands now.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it. I think more than anything, they're gonna tell us how they feel.
So if, if it ever wanted to be changed, it could go back to the ballot and people could vote to.
Absolutely, if, if people, and I haven't reading the same stuff that you guys are reading. Um, you know, and trying to, and I'll also dealing with. Kind of some of the, the businesses and that are trying to figure it out and the state statutes are very. Uh, contradicting around this. So I think that there, you know, I. I, I've struggled to, I struggle to understand exactly whoever, what, whoever wrote the statutes. Uh, they're very internally inconsistent, so if the research is there, if this were to be passed by the people and then the research. Research is there and four years and the state has it dialed in and there're these training programs that are. Highly accredited at that point. I mean, the, the voters could always put this. The council could always put this on, you could amend your charter, they could, voters could do it by initiative. This, the, the only benefit of this is that the other one requires us to go to the ballot every two years. And requires us to remember that, oh yeah, we have to re-up the two-year moratorium. Um, if, if council wanted to go with the two-year moratorium, then we could certainly do that. We just have to calendar it out.
One more short thing. And I just want everybody to remember that, um, that when you're looking at business names. Uh, we've got super successful businesses named Apple, Google. Uh, Microsoft, Facebook, or now Meta. So when you're looking at business names, yeah, they could be corny, they could be cheesy, they could be something that is completely out there, but you know, look at the businesses that are out there that are. Super successful and they do do a lot for the, the country, so. Anybody else, Scott, you think? They wanna add that? Oh, all right, gonna move on. Jerry, anything you wanna add in? I just did, okay, I just wanna make sure. All right, uh, last on the list, we have speed hump policy, so I'll let you take that, Melanie.
And this doesn't really require a motion or anything, but I'm just looking for any feedback if the council wants to weigh in. Typically, a policy doesn't necessarily need to come all the way to council. But this was of interest to council, and so at the direction of city council, staff has been working to develop a speed hump policy with feedback. And recommendations from the Traffic and Public Safety Committee. The policy was included in the packet, we're ready to go live with it. Unless there's anything that the council wants to add. Um, there was some, the, the Traffic and Public Safety Committee has really worked hard on this and um. We started with some templates from other cities, they've revised those, they've done research, um, and of the, then they kind of. I guess they rewrote the policy, um, and some of the things that they wanted to remove, like there's a checklist at the beginning, so if. A person pulls this up, say, I wanna speed hump in my neighborhood, first thing they do is go through this checklist. And they, the Traffic and Public Safety Committee recommended removing um, questions that are. I think, I think they're right, I think it would be hard for, you know, a general public person, even it'd be hard for myself to answer these. Does the street carry fewer than twenty-five hundred vehicles per day? Um, most of city, most of the streets in Estacada do, um, but so remove that one. Are the eighty-fifth percentile speeds less than thirty miles an hour? Um, you could probably guess at that, but they, I agree, it's, that's fine to remove that and. Um, the speed, the street is not a primary access route for emergency vehicles. And basically, I think the primary access routes for emergency vehicles are our collectors, that, you know, not necessarily the local roads. Zigzagging back through a, a neighborhood or something, so um, we, I removed those. Um, and they also, if the streets are not less than eight percent. Um, if they're, if they're a steep hill, they're over eight percent, then they'd like staff and public works to be triggered into looking for alter- alternate speed reducing options. And we have a couple areas that we need to be looking at that right now. Um. I guess the, we've been hearing anecdotally that the speed signs that flash the, um, your speed limit or tell you to slow down. Uh, not your speed limit, this flash your speed, and then if you're above a certain. Um, point, then they just tell you to slow down. We've heard that those are effective cuz they just catch, you know, sometimes you're just driving and you may not be paying attention, it's like, oh, going too fast. Um, so those would be a good option and we've, we've utilized those around town, but we may need to install some permanently. Um, they did, they tabled the discussion about privately funded. I don't know about that, they tabled discussing privately funded being an option. And they tabled removal of speed humps. The committee was pretty split on allowing people to privately fund speed humps in their neighborhoods, they wanted to discuss it further. Um, I, taking, you know, there, as they're going back and forth and weighing that, I, I agree. If, if it's, if a speed hump is needed and the neighborhood wants it, um, they're not that expensive. Um, I think the city should go ahead and fund that, and, and some of these policies, they could hire a contractor that's approved by the city. And I don't think we, I think that just gets into a whole, um. It's a lot of extra details that, that we don't wanna manage and I don't think the neighborhood really should have to. Um, so I took that out and the city would just fund them all. So anyway, if, if there is, um. If you wanna talk about any of that, if you have any other recommendations, I'm open to hearing about that. Um, otherwise, we're ready to just go live with this. It's a policy, it's not going in the code, so we can. Kind of amend it as we go along if we find something's not working.
Yeah, so they worked really hard on this and they spent quite a bit of time going through this and comparing and contrasting from different states. From all over the east coast, the west coast, different weather climates, different grades. You know, from communities that are on the side of a hill to communities that are flat and hundred degrees or ice cold, snowstorm, so. Uh, I'm pretty proud of uh, the committee on this one. However. I wanna clarify that on the eight percent thing, the reason that it was not struck down is because it came down to some engineering code. Or something that we found after doing a little bit more research. That that eight percent is supposed to be, it's like a federal thing where they suggest it. That being said. It was very clear that we don't want that to be dismissed as, well, they don't get a speed bump anymore because they're slopes. I believe that they did, the information you got was like fourteen, sixteen and fifteen percent on the three big hills in town, which are way above that. So they were talking about something a little bit more critical, like looking at options of photo radar or something that really sends a message to start slowing people down. Um, on the private funding thing, they spent quite a bit of time debating about that and. There, I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding on whether it's, can you, if you pay for it, do you jump? Everybody else and yours gets built now and everybody else gets put off, or like what that looked like, and I think then. The clarity for the interpretation of that is like, if, kind of like we do the sidewalks, right? If you're not on these streets as the city is. Installing speed bumps, then you have the option for your community to pay to continue that. So not necessarily that you freelance, go find your own person to install them, that's an approved contractor, but that you. Can opt into paying for it so that it, it happens that year and continues versus getting pushed to whenever the next. Of whatever budget is approved for following through. So just for some clarity for you guys on what that conversation looked like.
You, you mentioned something, if a neighborhood wants it, what, what defines that?
There are, they, they have to have a certain number of um. Um, folks in the, on the street sign off and it was, they have to have.
Two-thirds.
One hundred percent of the people within fifty feet of the, where the speed home would be located, I think it was, and then two-thirds of the rest of the. Folks that access their homes on that street. Um.
It, would that be the same either for, if the city is putting it in or if uh. If we decided later to open it up for private funding of one, would that be the same conditions for both?
It would be the same conditions for both. If the city determines that there's a place that a speed hump is, is needed, needed, not just preferred, but needed. Um, then they, or I guess advise for safety. Um, the city could go ahead and install speed humps. For instance, if there's a road. Coming through that, and there's a major crosswalk, you know, I've seen places where they, they put, when you're coming up this way, they have a speed hump on this side of the, and when you're coming up this way. So that it's like a split speed hump, and I haven't, I'm not an expert on speed humps, so we're gonna have to, we'll call in some. Engineering assistance if we, to make sure that it's not just to my specs. Um, but yeah, if, if it was, um. I think I forgot your question, but if it.
No, I'm just trying to think of like where, where half of a street wants one and half of a street doesn't. And it's privately funded, that it's gonna still have that same standard.
It would still have the same standard, even if we did allow it to be private. Funded. I think we should kind of work on like addressing areas of town that, um. And we don't have that big of a town, I think that we could kind of be methodical about it. Um, but we'll see, we'll see if, if applications come flooding in, we'll have to let the traffic and public safety maybe prioritize those and we'll get through them as fast as we can. We do have staff limitations and, um, and financial limitations, not to use, I don't, I hate to use that as, oh, we don't have enough money. Sorry, kids, I can't buy, I don't have, I hate that excuse. Um, and I don't wanna use that on speed humps either, cuz if they're needed, they're needed. Um, but we do, just logistically, it's, they're not gonna be in tomorrow, and we need to have, manage some expectations on that.
I'm gonna let Paul go first, cuz he may have a question.
No, I was just gonna say, I think, uh, I think the groups did a great job putting this together, uh, appreciate their work on it, I'm, I'm in support of it. As is, moving forward.
Uh, the one thing I was gonna bring up that I forgot, though, just for, just more information to consider, um. There was an item called a speed cushion. And what this did is it's a little bit less aggressive version of a speed hump or bump. And you can actually park on it, and in some of the photos that were demonstrated of this, it was an option like, that people were using on inclined. Egresses, so I, I'm not. I'm not sure where that falls in, but that's another option. I'm not sure where that falls in, but that's another option we could look at for some of these steeper hills. Because there's literally photographic proof that they're using them in hillside type communities. So I mean, that's something physical that slows people down. The. My only thing with pulling out the privately fun thing is going back to what Melanie just said is. If it's one of those things that we get put in the queue and a community has to wait, say, two, three, four years to get. To where we get to their neighborhood for the speed bumps, then. I think if they want to pay for it, do we deny them the right? But. I'm good on this. However, you guys want to go as a consensus like.
There's some good questions. I think. You know, that's why we're here, is to decide whether this is. Something we want to do. Um, the speed bumps, I think, are important with safe routes to school. And everything we've put into play, it only makes sense that we'd be all about these people. So. I'm game to getting this done right and and as fast as we possibly can. So if we can find the funding, let's find the funding.
And then let's see, you know, how many, if there's a a slew of applications that come in and it's gonna be. Too long, then we, you know, we could revise that to say potentially that they could fund it. I'm hoping that we don't have speed humps all over town. I'm hoping there's other options that are. Um, I'm hoping that speed humps are a. They're a solution in certain areas. But in that we don't have to have like the. Old town covered with speed humps. But we'll see how, you know, I guess this will be good feedback on how people are feeling about their neighborhoods. And also where we need some more enforcement of of speed. Um, I know it's.
Well, there's two ways you can go here. You can go more speed bumps to control speed, or we can go more cops, which is more expensive. You know, um. My theory here is there's nothing. I could really look at that won't warrant this. Because it protects people. I mean, that's the final hand. That's what it's all about here. No matter what we feel, whether we have a lot of them or a little bit of them. At the end of the day, it's knowing that our kids are safe and that people are safe because people are slowing down. That's the key here. So let's focus on that going forward.
I I think. I think also a good perspective, just to keep in mind is this is addressing the past. But also the future by setting this standard, we're setting an expectation for these developers going forward. As they're building in these hillside communities in these neighborhoods. Similar to Campanella or whatever, that may have these long. Straight shots or whatnot to get this done so that. Just so that we can be ahead of it. This is us being. Not being reactive, but being proactive finally and and getting ahead of this. So. Uh, I'm really proud of the committee. Like I said, they took it for a month, sat on it, talked about it, did a ton of research. Um. I'm happy offline to even answer any questions. I know that some of the members of the committee are in this room and that they would be more than happy to. Tell you there where they went. I just think. If we could even get to a point where we can move on this, that we can start to get a plan together to start to see some installation happen and be about action. That's. What I'm here to.
And I think that's what you're gonna do, step forward on that. Thank you for that. And thank you for traffic safety, the two that are here. Take that back to them and tell them. We appreciate everything they do. So thank you. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Is is the only designation that's lesser than a local street, a neighborhood local street?
I think local street is the lowest.
The reason I ask that is because the language in there, it seems like we're giving people a homework assignment. If we could just list any lower designation. Rather than saying. Is your street a local street or lesser? If there, list them out there. To so that they're not, because I follow the link from that to go to the code. And it just opens the table of contents. It's just creating.
Didn't go to the, didn't go to the page, right?
It doesn't go to the page. And then if we could just 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 list out, I mean, there's room for it in there just right. If it's neighborhood, local street, local street, any of the designations that disqualify it. If we could have that in there, just to avoid the staff having to deal with requests that are.
A map, I could put a map with all of our collector streets highlighted and say, those are not, these are not. Um, candidates for speed humps.
Just trying to avoid staff wasting time on on applications.
Thank you.
All right. Any other add-ins on this?
Okay, well, I I kind of do. I think one of the best deterrents for people driving fast are these unfinished roads in the development that have the giant manhole covers that are four inches above the. People slow down real quick when they come up and.
Yeah, they do. All right. We are at the next Cincinnati Community Group comment, and I have one here. Uh, Sherry Fox.
Yes. Good evening, Sherry Fox Haynes. I am the chair of the Downtown Estacada Commission. I'm here um because our liaison councilman um. Ten Bush and some of the committee members. Would like to possible. Want to start thinking about the holiday lighting, tree lighting event. And possibly moving it back to the square. I'm new to Estacada. I had to ask somebody where the square was. Um, I guess that was a popular. Location in the past and the reason for wanting to move it back to that location. Is to have more businesses off of Broadway and Main participate. And to get the local community involved with also shopping or at least visiting those. Businesses. So I just wanted to put a little bug in your ear. Um, I don't know logistics. I don't know if there. Elena did say that there might be some issues with power there, but. We've still got some time. We're already working on it. So I just wanted to get your feedback if you. Like yay or nay. I did talk to Santa. Santa was not in favor of this. Because he figured if it was cold, he wanted to be inside. Um, so I just wanted to put a bug in your guys' ear, get your feedback on it, so I can take it back to my team and say. What your thoughts are.
Being a person that's actually. Been in the square during that, I I have to say it was enjoyable. When we had all the burn barrels out there and the and the sleigh rides and the. You know, it really put a community feel to it, and I think that. Pursuing that might be a good idea, just checking into it, seeing how feasible it is. I know there is power out there. You just have to go through a harvest market. They can hook you up with those power boxes, but. Um, I'm 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 game on that. I think that would be a great thing to bring the community together. I know that it's really hard to put everybody in front here. So and it would take some of the pressure off city staff who are already very busy down here. So. You know, I I think you guys got a great thing going there. I think you ought to pursue it. My personal opinion. How's council feel?
So the, before you guys throw out your feelings, the the idea, the general gist of it is to get, you know, as Sherry said, uh, to get the rest of. The rest of downtown involved. So the event would start. Say in the square with the Christmas tree lighting and then be, you know, brought into city hall, you know, from there. Have people walk through downtown, go through downtown and come to city hall. Um, where something would happen here, whether it's, you know, pictures with Santa um. Hot cocoa, of course, and coffee and cookies probably, but yeah, that's the idea behind it. Um, and Julie Colton really wants to make her hallmark moment. So there were, you know, the 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 idea of sleigh rides. You know, wagon rides, hay rides, whatever, were all have all been thrown out there. So. Um, it's just something that they they don't want to put a lot of, the Arts Commission doesn't want to, or not arts, Downtown Estacada Commission doesn't want to put a lot of. Research and effort into this. If we're just gonna say no, it's gotta be here. So that's the, that's the whole gist of it. Um, I like the idea. I remember it being down there and how much fun it was when I was a kid. Um, so yeah, just throwing that out there for everybody.
I miss having it in the square. When we first moved here, my kids were teeny tiny and they just loved it down there and just. I I mean, I'm all for it, going back to the square. Not that this is bad, but I just thought that there were more opportunities and it just had more of a Christmasy holiday feel. And um I like the idea of the other businesses in the area getting involved. It's, we just seem, it, everything just seems so combined when it's right up here and. Not that it's not enjoyable, but I think there was just more opportunity to have that, you know, sense of community and togetherness when it wasn't square. So I'm I'm for bringing it back.
Does that mean the tree there as well?
I loved having that big tree there.
Yeah, that's that's a hard one to do, though, guys. You're in for it because at least flat was the person we dealt with before on bringing those giant trees in. It was not an easy process. But uh, I'm sure you'll figure it out.
Yeah, first you said you were new to the city.
Yeah, I I've only been here a year.
Yeah, well, thank you for stepping up and getting you involved. I mean, that's a big deal. Uh, I know everybody up here appreciates seeing that. So thank you for doing that. Secondly, uh, for those of you that were at the parade, we're at the Fourth of July this year, the sense of community this year was insane. There was very, very unifying feeling. It was very alive. A huge turnout. So I think if there's any year to do this, it's this year. Time is now.
I agree with this work. I I've really enjoyed the tree lighting down here the last couple of years, but it's very cramped, um, overpacked and then combined, we had some audio difficulties this last year. Where the people, a lot of the people couldn't hear what was being said. So I'd say. Put it wherever you guys want. The more, the more room, the better as we grow. I don't, I think we're limited on capacity here, so. The amount of time that we're gonna be able to have it here for much longer, I think is limited and we're basically setting the. A ceiling for the amount of people that can come and participate in it. So I'm open to that idea and say an audio check this year.
I'm supportive as well, too. I know Santa is a big draw, though, to get a lot of families here. So whatever you guys come up with, with the Santa solution. At the square there, I think it'd be great. Look forward to seeing what you guys can do.
Okay, great. Oh, I appreciate the feedback.
Chestnuts.
Chestnuts, okay. Yeah.
Roasted chestnut.
You and you and Julie Colton. You and your hallmark moments.
Gotta have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we are at mayor and council reports and comments. Jerry, I'll hit you first.
Uh, just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came out. Um, and again, great. Great conversations tonight. Um. You know, uh, we we make some pretty tough decisions. Um, and uh, you know, for the most part, I really do believe that, you know, we we make the right decisions for the community. So I just wanted to thank you guys. For the effort that you put in. Uh, you know, Sean, Sean and I can joke around about, you know, the how the council was, you know, five years ago. Um, I love the fact that you guys show up. Every single meeting, you know. Um, well, there's no, are we gonna have a quorum? Conversations happening before the meetings anymore, and I love it. I love the fact that you guys show up. You show up educated and informed and ready to go. And uh, you know, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I I'm more educated. Every single time I leave these meetings, because there's a lot of stuff that I researched that. I don't, I don't catch all the stuff, everything that you guys do, just everybody with their own individual backgrounds and their own. Um, the way that they do things that the way, you know, I I get a lot of information from these meetings and I really appreciate you all for it.
Uh, thanks, everybody, for coming. Uh, great conversations as as always, guys. I've. I don't know, I really appreciated it and thanks for all your hard work, Melanie and to your staff. Um, you guys really have been get doing a good job getting us prepared and calling us every week, trying to have conversations, keep us informed and. Uh, I appreciate it. I would like to say to the community, thank you for. Coming together on the Fourth of July, like I previously stated, those that were there. It was very, very cool to see. It was a very long parade, lots of involvement, lots of visitors from other towns even came to join us. And then the fireworks show was probably the best one I've seen in quite a long time. So I felt very, very. Like America's back is what it felt like. So. Thanks for being here.
Uh, thank you for everyone being here. It is an oven in here and uh, which reminds me. Um, I spent most of my weekend at Timber Park. I'm a disc golfer. I don't go on the water, but. I knew to go early because the parking lots are full. I cannot wait until we get the water access on Lake Shore. We need parking for it. Um, but I would love to see some wayfinding for people so they're not overcrowding. Areas that residents love. Um, so I'd love to keep that uh in mind for people.
Just want to thank you. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. I am interested in a couple of things that maybe Melanie can help with. I want to recognize Elena. Um, on. Doing the, putting in the work. I'm sure she had some support from staff on getting that savings with the interest rate. And just so people understand. Ten million dollars in savings translates to about eighteen hundred dollars per person. Uh, of savings and service rates over that period of time. So if the average house has three people, that's fifty four hundred dollars in savings for just one house over the course of that loan. And um, I just don't think we do enough to recognize. I if we can give her a bonus, I'd be all in for giving Elena a bonus, but. I I'm interested in knowing how much million, how many millions of dollars. That Elena and and the staff that support her. Have brought to the table for the residents of the city. And then I'd like to do something to just recognize the staff formally uh. I really, I think that'd be a great thing to do. I just, I, it's a lot of work. I've worked on trying to do some. Being a part of grant writing before. It's tedious, it's a headache, it's a nightmare, and it just gives me a migraine just to look at the paperwork for an application. And the fact that she's been so successful at at getting the city those grants, I just. Wanted her to know that we really appreciate her and all the staff that supports her as well. I'm not, I'm not familiar with who all is involved in in helping her with that, but and and thank you, Melanie, for. You're you're directing that ship and we appreciate you too. Thank you for for looking for ways to save the city and the residents money. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thanks. Thanks for the discussion tonight and the uh. The prep that you've given us as well, too. And and then I want to point out on the city's website, they've got a banner. It is hot in here. The banner shows the cooling centers, a link to that in in Clackamas County and Estacada. We've got the Estacada Public Library. And we've got Amp Farm listed as well, too. Obviously not City Hall Chamber.
It'll be nice and cool in here in the morning.
And great.
Melanie's office is open for cooling.
Uh, thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. I know it's a hot one. Um, appreciate you taking the time and um, Peter, just really wanna. Uh, say thanks for being here every meeting and providing. Good counsel for us. Um, appreciate all the work that you do and I always see you kind of. Even during meetings scribbling and writing things down and, you know, making sure you're. Getting the point across so we understand what's going on. And I think you explain things very clearly and concisely and it's it's palatable. And so I appreciate that. And um, yeah, appreciate staff again, all the hard work and I I agree with councillor Matt Caff, Fourth of July Parade was. Was amazing. It was a, it was a, I mean, it's been good in the past, you know, great years, but I don't know, there's just, there was definitely something special about this year. Good, good turnout and I'm excited to see. Some vitality and some life getting breathed back into the city. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. And uh, on my side, I gotta thank you guys for sitting out those seats. I'm hot here. I got, just imagine how hot you are out there. So we appreciate you coming out tonight and being here for all that we had to talk about. And Mike, I think you're on a good page there with getting together. And looking at something that appreciates our staff and our city manager for what they do. We'll talk. Um, and figure this out. And and just all your counselors. I mean, Jerry hit it on the nose. I mean, you're all coming here. You all show up. You all do the work that he's doing and you you read the material. That's half the battle. If you know what we're talking about and you know what we've got to deal with, then you're prepared when you come in this room. And to me, that's everything. Because that's what makes you good people. Good counselors. Doing the job that we were put here to do. So I appreciate each and every one of you and staff as well. And thank you for coming tonight. So we're gonna go into a executive session here in a minute and it's gonna get kind of boring, so we, you know, let's sit around for that. So I'm gonna clear the room for executive session and I will now read from the script. The Estacada City Council will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two. Point six six zero, which allows the council to meet in the executive session to consult with council. Concerning the legal rights and duties of public body with regard to current. Uh, litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representative of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session at the end of the executive session. We will return to an open session and welcome the audience back in the room. So thank you for that and we'll ask you to. Leave the room as we go into executive. Yeah, I think it's out of executive session and bring us back into the city council.
Is it hotter or cooler outside?
Okay. Back in the session, regular session, all right.
Back in the session.
Okay, so we're at solid waste franchise progress report for yard debris. And we have received proof of purchase from Walker disposal that they have ordered the yard debris carts and they also have or paid for their truck. So it will be providing that service. And so that meets the requirements that we'd ask them to come back with to confirm that they can provide that service. And if Jen and Tracy would like to, we will bring a chair up here. We just have a few questions. You'll probably have to turn them back.
So we've reviewed all your paperwork. I think we have a few questions up here from council. So I'm gonna start with a couple of them to
From two thousand twenty one till now, how many employees, how, how many employees have new hires? Have you had increased your employee base? If you had to, your best guess.
Like, right now?
Like if you had ten employees before and now you have thirteen now from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty four.
I think it's about the same number.
Same number. Okay. The is this document that you guys provided for a profit and loss statement? What software was used to, to create it?
Uh, for what year is that?
This is for January to December, calendar year two thousand twenty three.
That's QuickBooks.
This is not, yeah, it's not QuickBooks. I can tell you that. I use QuickBooks every day. It's not QuickBooks.
Is that the profit and loss?
It's a P and L, looks like a Word document, maybe, you know?
Oh, I think.
You know who created this?
Um, Jocelyn did.
Jocelyn did?
Yeah.
And you guys use QuickBooks as the, as the accounting software you guys use?
Yeah.
Okay.
So so what, what Jocelyn used to prepare that statement, she worked off of the, the bank statements directly off of the bank statements for the company and then and then went through the accounting records, the physical accounting records to provide what you have there.
Good. But you guys use QuickBooks as your accounting software?
We do use, well, the company does use QuickBooks. There have been issues with using the, the online QuickBooks, QuickBooks software. So what we wanted to do is to prepare something for you that was accurate as best as possible. And that's what you have there off of the bank statements that were generated for for the, from the financial institutions.
Are you confident in standing behind your franchise agreement that this is a truthful and accurate statement of a P and L for, for Walker disposal?
Yes.
Okay, great. So if you haven't gained any employee, are you a, the personal representative, are you an employee of Walker disposal? Do you collect payroll from Walker disposal? Does it account for the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in payroll per year? If you guys haven't, I guess if you guys haven't increased employees and your payroll has gone from I mean, it's gone up two hundred and eighty percent without gaining an employee based on your factually accurate P and L. Where did that cost come from? What, I guess, what's your annual salary?
I get paid thirty dollars an hour, but my hours are not that much.
Yeah, I mean, even if you work full times, that's like sixty four thousand dollars a year. So it wouldn't account for the discrepancy in the payroll. So I guess, how did your payroll increase two hundred and seventy five percent from three years ago?
So I think that the profit and loss that you guys have gotten from like twenty twenty one, I don't think that was correct because I went on, so what we had was we were using QuickBooks desktop. And then when we found out that we needed to share with the CPA and the attorneys and stuff, we did online thinking, oh, this would be genius. Well, it pulled reports and then dispersed them and all sorts of weird accounts. So we're having to go into the registry and check everything and then put it where it's supposed to do, but nothing still adds up. So we're having to call QuickBooks again for the fourth time and ask them why.
Do you guys have a CPA that works for you?
We do now.
When did they get hired?
Shortly after Judy passed away.
I, is it, so I guess about six months ago? How long has that been? Fourteen months ago. And since you guys hired a CPA, you guys haven't been able to produce a P and L statement out of QuickBooks?
Honestly, we had no idea that we were supposed to do this. Like this was just dropped on us.
As a business, as an operating business, you don't run a P and L statement?
I was just handed this. I don't.
I got you. I, I mean, but whoever was in that's, that's crazy that somebody hasn't been running a P and L on this regularly. I mean, that's how you tell how your business is doing. So for fourteen months, no one knew, no one that's operating the business knew that they needed to run a P and L statement to check the temperature of the, of the business? So I guess, where would the rest of the increases come from in the payroll? Why is there a, so you're saying that it was inaccurate? The P and L from before, the city wasn't getting paid their franchise fees accurately, since it's based on gross revenue?
They were taking the five percent like, like they were supposed to do and paying it for five, uh, franchise.
Five percent of the wrong number, though, because it was inaccurate information in two thousand twenty one? If the numbers were wrong in two thousand twenty one that you were providing to us that we're using to reference, that would mean that you were underreporting your gross revenue if the numbers were wrong. Right? Which would affect the city's franchise fee.
Well, the P and L that I had received that Melanie shared with me earlier today doesn't match up what's on the desktop at Judy's house.
Hey, Peter, you wanted to add something, didn't you?
Well, so you guys are showing on the setting aside the accuracy of the one in twenty twenty one, you're showing gross revenue of one million, three hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve. And you paid franchise fees of thirty four thousand dollars. And you're responsible for paying five percent franchise fee on your gross revenue. So like, how, where's the rest? Kind of where is the rest of the funds?
The other thirty two thousand dollars that was owed to the city of Estacada.
So, so what, what does the council need to make sure that that what you have in front of you will assure you that it's accurate?
Well, your own document that you provided us shows that you didn't pay the franchise fees that are owned, owed under the, so what do we, I well, you need, at this point, we need verification of everything.
So we need to do, we need to do a, um, an accounting verification. And what we received today is not sufficient. And so in the, according to the franchise, there's thirty days to cure that. And so we need to start working immediately, though, not worry, not wait till twenty five days go by. And I think that we need to request whatever documentation would be that we could confirm numbers and verify that. So I know you, it sounds like you've been struggling to man, doing a lot of things manually. And so if that's the case, I think that if, if we review your records, like we are allowed to do with the, in the franchise in that, within that thirty days, then we could report back to council that things are, are that we're, we are clear that these are accurate numbers. If that be the case and that we could provide a report to you.
So the, the documents that you provided us this morning, the annual report showed hauling uh, dump expenses, recycling and garbage of a hundred and sixty six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And the P and L you gave us tonight shows hauling and dumping expenses of three hundred seventy six thousand, eight hundred eighty seven dollars. And if you compare this to Arrow, which your service area is slightly larger than Arrow's, but their recycling and dump fees were a hundred and forty five thousand, three hundred and nine. So that's, that's certainly kind of in line with this one sixty six, seven eighty that we got this morning. But it is not at all in line with the three hundred seventy six thousand, eight hundred eighty seven dollars that we got at five thirty. But we're, we're talking about a two hundred ten thousand dollar discrepancy between this morning and this evening.
Is it, could it be different? Because the, the, the one report, the multi-page report is July of twenty two through June of twenty three. And the one that we got this morning is January of twenty three to December of twenty three. So they're not even the same. You know, it's a twelve month period of time. Okay, so I just noticed the difference. That's why I brought it up. The full year that captures every month.
Right. It's, I mean, we're, we're talking about a, a two hundred ten thousand dollar differential.
I, I understand.
And six, six of the months are the same.
Aside that, I'd like to know why you waited until after processing hours to send a wire transfer to pay for your containers. I mean, you took it to the end line and then some. And today, but you told us that you purchased them July first, I believe, but we have a wire transfer for today, which is would be another lie.
The, the day after the June twenty fourth meeting with the city council, we jumped on the ordering of the yard debris bins. There uh, and, and with the purchase of the new truck that Dan Walker Disposal Service has now. It is a process. There's, there's sending of the documents, there's a reaching out to a contact who can coordinate the sale. There's making sure all the signatures are put down on the right place. And, and making sure that the people who were purchasing these items from are getting their money. For some reason, the wire transfer did not go through last week, but it did go through this, this afternoon. And the yard debris bins are being expected to arrive mid-August.
Did you know on July fifth, when the email went out that they were paid for, that that wasn't in fact paid for?
I did, but there
Why would you lie?
What, what do you, why?
If, if on July fifth, you knew that they weren't paid for and you said you sent an email saying they're paid for, why would you do that?
I, I did not. I don't think we were aware that the wire transfer did not go through until yes, so things have been happening very quickly here. There was a scramble to get to the purchase of the truck and the yard debris bins. But we accomplished those tasks. We have the yard debris bins ordered. We have the truck. We, there's legal title that's being processed.
We, no, we appreciate you. I very much, I personally very much appreciate you guys got the containers taken care of. You got the truck and you're gonna be able to provide the service. I'm just really concerned about the company in general, if the person running it doesn't know that, how to run a P and L, hasn't, doesn't have the ability to run a P and L, doesn't know that you even need to run a P and L, that's a scary idea of someone that is in charge of running a company that doesn't know that. And the quicker the transition can happen to the errors, I think would be the best thing for the company. When do you guys anticipate the transfer? When is the probate gonna be reconciled with?
So we are finalizing a petition for a distribution of the company to Mark Ingle this week. I'm gonna have Mr. Jolly look it over and have it filed ASAP.
So when do, would you anticipate the transfer to happen? When do you, I, does that have to wait for a hearing in Clackamas County Courts or?
There shouldn't be a hearing because it's not something that's contested. Sometimes we're at the mercy of court clerks and the judges, but we're definitely going to push for it to happen as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Well, can the day-to-day operations be taken over uh, as soon as possible as well, too?
We've talked about that with Mr. Jolly and we might consider that revisit that option again. So, so yes, that's something that we are considering.
How soon would you want to see that happen? Or how soon could we expect that to happen?
Well, there would be a transitional period, maybe about a month.
I guess what would stop Mark from coming in and taking over in that role tomorrow?
So Judith Walker, she owned eighty percent shareholder interest in the company. She's deceased. Mark Ingle has twenty percent. Uh, we're doing our best to get it in his hands and make sure that the company is, is in a good shape when it when it goes to him.
It's not. So I guess, what percentage does Jen own of the company, of the shares?
Eighty, eighty percent, not, so Jen is the personal representative. She's the fiduciary. So she, the estate owns eighty percent of the shareholder interest.
She has fiduciary responsibility over a company and she doesn't know that she needs to run a P and L? Do you think she's well-equipped to be a fiduciary for the company?
We're we're working on making sure that the company goes into Mark Ingle's hands as soon as possible.
That wasn't the question. Do you think Jen King is well-equipped to be, to fulfill her fiduciary responsibilities to the estate? If she doesn't know that she needs to run a P and L statement?
Frankly, I, I'm not sure why she said that because we've been working on putting one together for quite some time since
The answer, though. What's the answer to the question?
I think she is the best person to take on the responsibility at this time.
And what was preventing Mark, who has twenty percent ownership currently from stepping in tomorrow? If that's what you guys intend on doing and you want to transfer the eighty percent to him and he's gonna come in charge of it, why can't he just come in there and start working tomorrow?
Well, he can if, if that's what would be best for the company. So maybe that's what we'll explore. To have him have him step in and, and take care of what we've been dealing with.
I would just hate for us to put a thirty, a thirty day cure. And then the person that's gonna take the brunt of that is Mark. And he's counting on someone that's not equipped to provide the documents accurately during that timeline. So I would like Mark to have the book, the lion's share of that thirty days to cure to be able to reconcile and make things right with the city of Estacada, rather than Jen being in that position. Thirty days to cure, we don't get all the documents we need and the information we need. And he and his family take the brunt of losing the franchise agreement because you guys aren't able to cure it.
So I, I don't think a, a sudden handing over the business, there would need to be some kind of training to make sure that they're equipped to deal with what the responsibilities of the company are. And, and yes, that includes
Who would provide that training?
Jocelyn and Jen.
So why didn't they do it for Jen?
Why didn't?
Why didn't they get her up to speed? Because I mean, you're talking in circles, not to be disrespectful, but you're not answering questions and you're speaking in circles. So to, to be to the point, you're saying that you can't give him the company to run it, to save it potentially, and save your franchise agreement because there needs to be some training. But you've had fourteen months with the fiduciary and you haven't been able to accomplish that. So you're trying to convince us that in thirty days that you're gonna be able to do the same. Less than thirty days.
Did Jen receive any training before she stepped into the position? Was there a transition period? Did she step in and get trained on it?
Well, Jocelyn Fausto, who is the secretary for the company, has been by her side this entire time and she worked
Can you please answer the question? Did Jen get any training before she stepped into her position?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. And Mark's been a part of the company for how long? Decades? I think the transition's gonna be a lot smoother for Mark going into that position than it was for Jen. And I know you're in a bad spot and you're trying to do the best thing by your family. I'm not trying to be mean to you by any means, Jen. I just think that if the transition is coming, I don't know, it seems like there's more to the story, some sort of family feud or something that's, that's leading to really poor decisions for the company. And if Mark's gonna get the company and you're gonna file a motion to hand it over to him, what's the risk in that? It's, it's gonna be eighty percent plus twenty. It's gonna be one hundred percent his. Who do you think's best equipped to make a decision if he's prepared to step into that position? I would think that Mark is. He's gonna, he's gonna I would think that Marcus, he's going to, he's going to have the responsibility of it and he's going to have the penalty of it. So why not make that happen as soon as possible?
That's fair, but we are dealing with Oregon statutes that require permission from the court to allow distribution of an estate.
I'm not saying distribution. I'm saying that, that Mark steps into Jen's position tomorrow. He makes thirty dollars an hour till the probate gets resolved and he gets ownership of it and then he can take over whatever salary he wants. There's no reason that he can't be in the position running the, the company now.
Okay, so if, if the council would feel most comfortable with Mark Ingle being in charge of the company, then I think that's the way we should move forward.
I agree.
I agree. Before, there's no company to even argue about it anymore. We're kind of at that point. And I'm sorry, uh, some of my counselors are strong-handed here, but this is very dangerous for us as a city council, being up here making this choice to hang on at every point when you tell us stories that don't make sense. And we're all pretty educated up here. Um, we can put two and two together and come out with four. We really can. And when you tell us something that doesn't add up and we're here monitoring it and looking over the numbers and, and adding them all up. And some of these guys are really good with math and you just talked to one of them. So it's pretty easy for us to figure out that it doesn't add up. So we need security. So we need you to give us accurate numbers. I know you're arguing over who gets what of this estate and it's a shame because I knew Judy very well. We were really good friends. So the idea that we're sitting here now arguing over who's going to get what in the end is just ridiculous. But we got the thirty days. We'll give you the thirty days to come up with the proper information going forward on this because and Peter will give you the rest of the details here. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, per your, per your um P and L that you gave us tonight, you owe us thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, five hundred, forty dollars in franchise fees for two twenty-three that we added in first season. And, and I, I, I'm kind of wondering about the year before. I, I mean, I, I we have been over backwards for you guys. We could have, we could have terminated this, but this council cares a lot about locally owned businesses. And that's informed their choices and it's informed my advice. And you give us a P and L this morning that granted, it's not the exact same period, but the fees aren't that much different. That shows seven hundred sixty thousand dollars and you give us a P L. You give us tonight at one point three million? I, I, I mean, you know, I I have legal obligations and that's why I'm telling you as a council, now that we know that they, they're thirty thousand dollars in arrears that um that it, my advice to you would be to give them the thirty-day notice and hope that they're able to provide proof in the form of bank accounts and others, other items, numbers that make sense. The amount that is owed, which I think we need, probably going to need to verify. And that they coordinate with Mr. Jolly and his clients in order to see if they can pull this thing out because it, it is. And I, I feel, I feel foolish for not doing this earlier, frankly.
And I have to sit here and wonder when my lawyer is telling me that we've got an issue here and he's made that very clear that there's a problem. We all know that. So we're giving you the thirty days to come up with this. I hope that between the two, you guys can come up with numbers that make sense. The company in proper order and back to its normal, because it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And I know, like I said, you're in a court case. I get that. But I knew Judy. I loved her as a friend and a colleague. So you need to get this together. All right, because we do pride ourselves in hometown companies. We'd love to see you make it. But you've got to get this together. And you've got to do it quick. All right? So that's it. We're going to dismiss everybody in the room. We'll give you the thirty days. We'll see where we're at in thirty days and we'll go from here.
Just going to provide the list for the cure for thirty days.
Provide that tomorrow morning.
Do, do we need a motion or anything on this?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd also just like to add that this is shameful and disrespectful. Please don't come back to this council in any kind of less than a professional manner. This is embarrassing, not only on your behalf, but on behalf of your family. It's disgusting. Please don't treat us like we're stupid and talk in circles either. We don't appreciate it.
Okay, so that is the last, I think we got solid waste franchise, but. Can we ask a question of Mark?
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, can you step up, please? I just have a, I just have a quick question for you. Um, if they were, if they were to hand over the business to you tomorrow, do you feel confident, competent and comfortable that you could get us the documentation that we need over the last, over the last however long Peter specifies? And uh, run the company the way that it should be run? You have to talk into.
Yeah, switch, switch it down.
If I was given everything, access to everything? Yeah, I could.
Okay.
But I'd have to have access to everything.
Can you let us know within five days if you don't have access to everything?
I just want to add that we have no idea what we're walking into. And so and I know that thirty days goes very fast. And so um I guess all we can ask is an opportunity to coordinate with these folks. Um, and some patience and grace from the council to get this under control.
Well, you know, we've been back and forth. That's obvious. And we have the thirty days on the books. We'd like to get verification a little faster than that. So you know, if you guys can get to us a little sooner, is that something you feel comfortable with over there? All right. If you can get back to us sooner, so we have time to look the stuff over, get this all under control and feel comfortable again in that relationship. I think we can work with this, but we need to get accurate information and people in charge because this is a shame. What I'm seeing here is just not right. Because this company was strong for many, 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 many years in this community and I favor this company, I always have. So please give us that. If you can. We share your frustration. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. All right. We're done with this. I don't think we have to make a motion, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting.